Call the meeting to order, want to welcome everybody here. Before we get going on a public hearing and a few other things, I do want to call on Councilor Swagster to bring the opening, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're here in the month of September, and this is the time when we start thinking about going back to school and getting into the rhythm of things. And we also sometimes reflect on what we did during the summer. And one of the things that I did during the summer is I took the opportunity to write a research report on an education topic. This is something that I do in quite a few summers. And this summer, I wrote a report that was called Content Knowledge is the Key Learning. It actually got a reasonable nonimmediate attention. And in the report, I basically make the case that knowledge, having facts in your brain, is a very important thing in the learning process. You know, we often hear the sayings today such as, you know, that the world is changing so fast and transforming so quickly that there's no point in trying to memorize any particular things because it's going to go out of date. You know, the world is changing so quickly that rather we need to learn how to learn rather than bother memorizing any particular facts. Or we might hear the saying that, you know, 65% of the jobs that are going to exist in 20 years don't even exist yet, so therefore, there's no point in trying to pass on specific facts today. These are things that some people actually say. And so, what I want to say here is that those sayings just simply aren't true. But knowledge is really important. It's really important still, just as important as ever, to actually memorize things, to have facts in your brain, and to know things. And one of the things I did in the report was point out some specific reasons. Why is knowledge important? Why do we actually have to know things? Why should we have facts in our brain? Why should we go through the effort of, whether it's memorizing multiplication times tables or learning specific facts about our history? Why should we actually know these things? And there's three reasons I want to just briefly mention. One of them is that having knowledge in your brain makes reading comprehension possible. We often think of his reading as this abstract skill, that, you know, that we learn how to read, and we can decode the words, and we can sound the word out and say it, and that's enough, and then we can just read any document. And that's only half the equation. The other half of the equation is reading comprehension, understanding what you're reading. And in order to understand what you're reading, the research is quite clear, that you need to have content knowledge. You need to know specific things about what it is that you're reading in order to understand. If you're reading an article and you have to look up half the words in order to understand it, you're not going to read the article, because it's just going to be too difficult. You're going to give up. And so, if you want to pick up a newspaper and read an article about what's happening in Ottawa in regards to politics, you'd better have some facts in your brain about what parliament is, and the House of Commons, and the Prime Minister, because if you don't know those things, you're not going to be able to understand. So, you need to know things in your head. It's not enough just to Google everything. You need to know things in order to understand. Second key point, that knowledge is important for critical thinking. Critical thinking is often presented as another abstract skill, that if we're taught strategies for how to think critically, you know, do step one, two, and three, and voila, you're thinking critically, and now apply it to whatever it is you happen to be doing, that's simply not true. You need to have specific knowledge about what you're doing in order to think critically about it. Consider the discussion that's been happening over the last number of weeks about John A. McDonald, our first Prime Minister, and is it appropriate to have schools named after him and statues built in his honor? Well, in order to think critically about that important question, you need to know some things about him. You need to know some things about what he did as Prime Minister. You need to know some of the political context of mid-19th century Canada. You need to know some of his achievements, and you need to know about his flaws. And you need to know all those things before you can actually think critically about that particular issue. Or another example, if you were to hand me an article about engineering and asked me to think critically about it, I wouldn't be able to do it. It's not because I'm stupid, at least I hope not, and it's not because I don't have the ability to critically think, it's because I don't have backward knowledge of engineering. It's not my area of expertise. I cannot think critically about it unless I know something about it first. And third key point, knowledge empowers poor kids. You know, when we go to school, not everyone is coming from the same situation. Some people come from middle-class families, upper-middle class, and some come from poorer families. And on average, the kids who come to school from the poorer families tend to have less knowledge coming into school, because parents are less able to provide tutoring, you're less likely to be going on educational excursions, you're less likely to be read to at home, and you're coming with a bigger knowledge deficit. And if you don't get that knowledge deficit corrected, if you don't learn a lot of things, well, you fall behind. And one of the key areas we fall behind is reading comprehension, you need to know things. And so, whatever avenue we are in life, whether we're involved in the school system, or we're just dealing with our own kids, or we're interacting with other people's kids, take the opportunity to support the importance of knowledge. Take the time to memorize things. Take the time to pass on knowledge to others, and never, ever let anyone tell you that specific knowledge is obsolete. It's not. We need to know things now as much as we ever did. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Swagster. Obviously, you are a little bit passionate about this, and I only know very few people who would actually, during their summer holidays, write a research report, but thank you. We appreciate your time and we appreciate your thoughts. We do have the agenda in front of us. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Councilor Seaman, second by Councilor Funk, any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Great, we have the minutes of August 15th in front of us. You've had a chance to review those. Can I have a motion to accept them, please? Councilor Penner, second by Councilor Penner, any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. There's no business arising from the minutes. We are just past 7:35, so we will move to the public hearing process, and we have one public hearing today, and it's in regards to conditional use CU 2017-07, and there's also a variation of V 2017-16. These are on page four and 19. This is in regards to 486 Main Street. We will do the public hearing for both of these topics at the same time concurrently. I will close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Workineteen, I'll ask you to introduce this, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is, as you mentioned, two particular land use files, conditional use file CU-2017-07, and variance file V-2017-16. The public hearing is concurrent for both applications, as they both relate to 486 Main Street. The owner of the property is 606-0137 Manitoba Inc., with the application for the conditional use and the variance being Mr. Daniel Schultz. Purpose firstly of the conditional use file is to allow multifamily residential development to occur within the C2 commercial community zone. Secondly, the purpose of the variance file is to reduce the amount of commercial use space required on the ground floor of a residential development within a C2 commercial community zone property. The purpose of the application is, the applicant is proposing to build a two-story eightplex, a two-story fiveplex, and a two-story commercial building on the present site, with the application also seeking to reduce the commercial component required within the multifamily development in the C2 commercial community zone. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on the file. With respect to the files, I would suggest that if council is prepared to proceed to approve that the conditional use application file be dealt with first, and subsequently the variance application file. I can say, though, with respect to the conditional use application, this particular property, and also, I should say, with the variance application, this particular property was also subject to a similar application by the applicant in 2013, with the similar site plan as you have been provided within your agenda package. The decision of council at that time was to approve, subject to the execution of a development agreement. And with respect to the conditional use, recommendation is that council approve the conditional use, subject again to the execution of a development agreement. And secondly, if council is prepared to approve the conditional use, the administration recommendation on the variance file, while it is a unique application, and with respect to the strict interpretation of the zoning bylaw, there are some concerns. Overall, the management recommendation for the variance file is also for council to approve, subject to the execution of a development agreement.
Thank you. I see we do have the applicant here today. Does the applicant wish to speak before we ask for any objections or questions?
I prepared a presentation. I can show that, and then you can move on there.
Thank you. If you can take the podium, state your name and address. I know this feels maybe like deja vu for you, because we've done this before a few years back, but maybe there's some new information or changes, but we'll turn it over to you. And please state your name and address, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Hello, my name is Danny Schultz. My address is 22 Oregon Avenue here in Steinbeck. And about four years ago, we came with the same request to you to allow the multifamily residential development in a C2 commercial zoning. You may ask why we're coming again, asking the same thing. Well, it's quite simple. In May 2013, when our request first was granted, Steinbeck was experiencing a building boom, and quite a few apartments' buildings went up that year. The supply was greater than the demand. As a result, a lot of those new units were standing empty, and that's why when we decided to put this project on hold. The market has recovered since, and we want to develop this lot now. Our proposal has not changed since then. It's still the same, consists of a commercial building facing Main Street and residential townhouses in behind. Like, this is the zoning map I took from the, yeah, from the Steinbeck, like, online, like, the city of Steinbeck side. And we can see that, this is the lot we're talking about here, right? So, you can see it's a commercial zoning, central business district, as they see it there. And like, basically, what it says is, "The city of Steinbeck Central Business District is designed to promote a vibrant urban area with the downtown area, and is intended to enhance the character and function of the central business district by accommodating growth and provide less rigid requirements." Yeah, we can see that 486 is right at the border of C2 and residential low density. So, our plan is to kind of use this lot as a transition from residential to the commercial zone. This is the current condition. Like, in, yeah, 2016, there was still that old building there. We teared it down since, and right now, like, there's basically nothing standing there. This is what the site plan is going to look like. We have Main Street in the bottom here. That would be the commercial space here, eightplex, and then the fiveplex in the back. Yeah, we are thinking of building in two phases. First, where phase one would be building the fiveplex, and then phase two would be building the eightplex and the commercial space right after we finished the phase one. And then, all around the property, we will also construct a fence to provide more privacy to the neighbors. And this is what it could look like when it's done. You can see the commercial space in the front, and then we have the, well, this is the eightplex, and then the fiveplex in the back. And these are kind of like the floor plans for the residential units. Each unit is about 500 square feet. This is the main level. You have the living area, the kitchen and dining area, and then this is the upper floor, three bedrooms and a bathroom here. Yeah, like, each unit also will have a basement. This will allow us to not use piles for the foundation and gives storage space for the tenant as well. So, yeah, that is pretty much the whole thing. I don't know, any question, any?
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time, before we hear from any public? Councilor Penner?
Yes, through you, to the applicant. Do you have any views of the rear of the residential units? So, we could see where the balconies will be located, or?
I'm not sure if you can see it on the one picture I had. Like, I don't have any, like, I didn't take any specific picture of the, well, you can't really see it. Okay, like, on that side here, it's pretty much like it fenced in already. And in the back, except the one lot in the corner, like, it's all covered with trees. And then, on that side, like, I think in the back, like, in the very far corner, there's some trees as well, but like, between first choice and the trees, I guess, there's a little bit of open space.
If you can go back to the next, I guess it was the sketch of the, yes. Are the balconies in the front facing the parking lot, or are they in the back? Are they both?
Like, we're not going to have any balconies there.
Okay.
Like, we're going to build a fence around, and the buildings are set back for one reason is so that we can build a deck. Like, it's going to be one townhouse, right? Like, up and downstairs is one tenant. So, like, the living space is on the, yeah, on the main floor. That's why we are asking for the variance, so that we can build a residential on the main floor. And then, we would have a deck there, and it's going to be a six-foot fence all around the property. So, there's no balcony or anything like that.
Good.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant at this time? Councilor Seaman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You've got phase one as residential instead of commercial.
Yeah.
And this is a transitional commercial zoning.
Yeah.
So, why are you choosing to do that instead of commercial building and residential first?
To be honest, like, there are a lot of commercial units empty in Steinbeck still. I mean, it's, I know it's a commercial zone, and I'm aware that we have to build a commercial space, but like, for us, okay, like, what we want to do, why we want to start with the fiveplex is to make people aware of, like, something is going to happen here. We want to put up a sign, and then we can, like, at the same time, advertise for the commercial space as well, to not have it, like, empty for a long period of time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just a question. The timeframe then for phase two, do you have any, if we would allow the, you know, phase one, at what point could we expect a commercial building? Or is that something, like, is there any commitment on your part?
Like, I would have to talk to the construction guys again, like, but from my understanding was, like, the fiveplex, like, we would want to start as soon as we can, maybe even this year, and like, I think within one year, we could start the phase two then.
Thank you. Councilor Swagster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, if you'd just clarify, because I think you partially answered this before, the parking lots?
Yeah.
The proposed parking lot, what's the property that's immediately decided? Like, what type of property? Was that on the, that was on the picture, I believe, before? I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, in terms of, because the cars, what are they going to be facing?
Like, you, you're talking?
Yeah, what's right there?
Like, okay, these are residential buildings, like, they have all the fence all the way around. This one, I think, till maybe here, there's no fence, but in the back, there's a fence. And then, yeah, on, like, in the back here, it's all trees. I think till here, this one is somewhat open, and then I think there are some trees in the back here, and then the rest is open again. Some, well, this is first choice, yeah.
Does that clarify?
Yeah, that clarifies.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Fair?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. If I understood your presentation correctly, is there three phases or two?
Two.
There's two. So, when you do the second residential, the commercial will be built at the same time?
Yeah. The eightplex and the commercial building would be built at the same time then, yeah.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, oh, Councilor Penner?
Administration?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Well, I'll get you to take a seat. Just, I'll get Administration to clarify something, and then you may have a supplementary. Mr. Workineteen, just for clarification, I know there was some concern about the phasing and the ability to possibly build only residential when there's commercial component that's required. Can you comment on that?
I can speak generally. The property is zone C2. The clear intent of the city zoning bylaw is that the property be used for commercial purposes. With respect to the variance that Mr. Schultz is requesting, it is seeking a departure from the fact that normally, ground floors of any structure within a C2 zoning requires commercial space to be constructed in it. And that is the purpose of the variance, is to allow the structures to be built, particularly the fiveplex as an independent residential-only unit, and the commercial space generally to be separate from it, however, as Mr. Schultz indicated, he does intend to construct the commercial space in phase two of the project.
Thank you. Can, as part of the development agreement, is there some provision that will require that to take place?
Yes, our intention is to make that as part of one of the requirements in the development agreement.
Thank you. Councilor Penner?
Further to your comment, I know a few years ago, we approved apartment on Main Street, and we allowed that the commercial space would be built later on, and it wasn't part of the ground floors, it should have been, and at this point, the commercial space still has not been built. I'm just wondering what kind of heavy hammer do we have in a situation like that, when we have allowed the residential before the commercial, and the commercial doesn't end up coming up?
I?
Which property I'm talking about?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Besides Snap Fitness, there's an apartment building, which should have had, we gave variance there as well, but there was supposed to be commercial on the main floor. I can't remember the timeline on this, but we said they could build the commercial as a separate unit closer to the road.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll clarify that, but I think specifically, the question that you have, though, is about how do we enforce that the commercial is there?
Right, because I regretted that decision, because we haven't been able to enforce it.
Yeah, okay. I'll get Administration to comment, and then Councilor Swagster. So, Mr. Workineteen, so, just to be clear, my understanding from what you said is that part of the development, if this does proceed, that part of the development agreement would include that phase two must include that commercial component, and there will not be, there will not be approval for the further building until that is there. Is that correct?
That is how I expect we will exercise that requirement.
Thank you. Councilor Swagster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just another question for Administration. Obviously, we'd approved something very similar back four years ago. Now that you've heard the presentation, is there any difference at all that you've noticed between what we approved in 2013 and what's being proposed was here? Is there any material difference between this project and what had been approved?
Based on what I've seen in the previous application and material, there is no material difference to the proposal being put before council.
Thank you. One final question to Administration?
For Administration, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so, now, zone C2, if we don't approve this, what could be built on a C2 property? How high? How close to the property lines? That kind of stuff?
If you give me one moment?
Okay, I'll let him answer that in a short order. Thank you for the question. I will now ask for either questions, or comments, or objections from, this is a public hearing, from the audience. Is there any questions, or comments, or objections? Anyone wish to speak? Okay, please take the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, Paula Entz, 44 Sunrise Ave. in Steinbeck.
Thank you.
So, I would be to the left of the fiveplex. Thank you very much, first of all, for coming around again. And you came to our house. He was very good with listening to our concerns and addressing them. He has agreed to not put any windows or balconies in the fiveplex that would face our yard, so that would maintain privacy. So, we're very thankful for that. He's also willing to move the boundary away 15 feet from our property, from the back fence, and put in green space. So, we're going to have trees planted there. We do have one large one, but we would like a lot more, just to help with noise visually. And I'm just wondering also, then, if city council, if we see this big albatross going up in our backyard, and we're going, oh, my goodness, it's noisy, there's 13 families, our whole world has changed, our backyard has changed, our family life has changed back here, do you approve creative thinking outside the box with something that we would construct or build as a visual barrier within our own yard, to just kind of block off? And I'm not talking a 20-foot fence, but just creative structures or architectural pieces that would help us maintain some backyard privacy and beauty?
That's a very loaded question.
[laughing]
I understand what you're saying. I can't answer that question right now, obviously. We do have specific requirements for fencing, that it can't be more than, I believe, six-and-a-half feet high and such, but certainly, I think what you're talking about, and what Mr. Schultz is talking about, is about vegetation and making sure that there's appropriate trees, which can do a major amount of that type of, of that type of barrier creation. So, you're not defining clearly what you possibly might want to build, so I can't possibly give you an answer.
For example, I'll give you an example. We would like to maybe put up one of these beautiful sails. There's canvas sails, you put in steel posts, and you have this architecturally beautiful sail that would then, you know, we'd have a number of them professionally done in our backyard as a, as a barrier, right? Protect our pool, protect our hot tub use. It helps a little bit for sound, it's on our yard. I'm just wondering if that's something that the city would be?
I can't answer that for you now. Maybe Administration might have some further information for you. I'm not going to put Mr. Workineteen on the spot right immediately, unless he has an answer.
Other than that, would be a good question to ask of our building inspection department with respect to the types and heights and sizes of structures that may be permitted in that zone.
Right. Okay. So, open to discussion anyways.
Certainly, I think it would be important to speak with them clearly, and they would give you the guidelines of what is available or not, but I think what you're suggesting clearly is that Mr. Schultz does need to take into consideration the, what is, first of all, the fencing, but second of all, the vegetation that's possibly being?
And he's agreed to that, so we're very thankful. That's really why I'm here to say thank you, at least for working with us on this.
Very good. Thank you, and Administration can connect you with the other department that will answer some of those questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussions, or questions, or objections? Please state your name and address.
My name's Trudy Graham. I'm at 239 Craker, so part of the eightplex would be abutting my property. Now, I heard you say, Paula, that Mr. Schultz had come to see you now?
I'll just get you to, yeah.
We've not, we've not had the privilege of a visit with him this go-round. Previously, yes, he was there, and I heard you mention a six-and-a-half-foot fence. He promised us an eight-foot fence, just as a point. Mr. Schultz, I don't know how, what is the?
So, I'll get you to direct everything towards us, and then we will direct it to you.
So, I would like to, I would like to know what is the space between the building and the property line, his building and the property line?
This is along your side?
Mm-hmm. So, that would be the eightplex?
All right. Other questions?
Another question is, what sort of allowance, or what sort of water drainage will there be? There has been a problem with water standing, especially in a wet year, it is really, really, really bad, and all of the yards along, going south of where we live, the back is very, very, very wet, and if this land, or if this building is built up at all, the, there's more soil there, the water is going to be even worse. So, what sort of water drainage? And I do recall previously, there was concerns about access to the property, having something to do with the fire hall being across from there. It could be very busy, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope, just a comment, though. I'm very pleased to hear that there won't be any piles being driven. Very big concern for the basement, so those are my questions.
Good. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from people here at the public hearing? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, then I'll ask Mr. Schultz to, again, take the podium, please. And there is three specific questions, and I'll give you, first of all, there was a question in regards to space on the property line along the Graham's area there. There's also the drainage plan question, and also just the access and the fire hall and so on. Go ahead.
Yeah. I'm sorry that I just, like, I tried to talk to all the neighbors, and I did several rounds, like, unfortunately, I couldn't get ahold of you. That's why I didn't, like, stop by, get your place again. But, like, to answer one of the questions, this is a lot clearing plan provided from MMM Group, and, like, basically, it shows how the water is, yeah, to run off the property, like, how the parking lot is to be constructed, and basically, what it says, I mean, it's hard to read here right now, but the water runs to Main Street. Like, it is designed so that the water, like, from the whole property is going to run off to Main Street. And, yeah, it doesn't show in here, like, how far it is from your property, but I just looked it up on the drawings. Like, it's 14 feet and 6 inches, like, from that corner to the property line.
Okay, sorry.
You are actually?
Sorry, if you can just direct?
You are here.
Mr. Schultz, you have to direct everything towards us, please, rather than the audience. Thank you.
Okay, like, this is kind of like upside down. Main Street is on top here. This is first choice, and this, I believe, would be you then. So, like, yeah, from your property line to the edge of the eightplex here, that would be 14 and 1/2 feet.
Thank you.
And, so, what was the third question again?
Just about access with the crossing Main Street and so on, any concerns in regards to that, with the fire hall there and so on?
Like, I'm not, like, I'm not sure in what sense there would be any concerns. Like, there's going to be a speed bump in the front here. It's on the drawing, it's hard to read because it's so small, but there are going to be, it's going to be a speed bump here anyway. So, like, or, like, people who are, like, exiting, they have to slow down in that sense. But other than that, like, I'm not sure if there's any concern.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Ms. Graham, I'll just let you know, he did answer some of your questions. Is there anything further you'd like to ask or any questions, any comments you'd like to make? No, okay. Anything further from the audience? Seeing none? Okay, sorry, I'll get you to take the podium and state your name and address.
Derek Peters, 514 First Street. I guess just a concern of mine would be, how close can he build this commercial building to the sidewalk that's along Main Street?
Okay, good question.
Just for safety reasons, like, first choice is right there, and that's obviously very busy with kids and whatnot on the sidewalk. And I'm just concerned about visual leaving the parking lot and, let's see, walking down the sidewalk headed, whatever direction that is.
Thank you. Mr. Workineteen, I'll get you to answer that question in regards to, what is the minimum and maximum setback that commercial properties can have along Main Street?
According to city zoning bylaw, that in the C2 zone, minimum front yard setback is zero feet. Minimum side yard setback is also zero feet. So properties built in C2 can build essentially up to property line with the exception of the rear yard, which has a required 20-foot setback.
All right, is there a maximum that it can be? It cannot be set farther back then?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any final comments from the applicant before we proceed? No, thank you. We'll then close the public hearing on both the conditional use and the variation. We'll deal with the conditional use first, council. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Swagster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the conditional use.
Thank you. Is there a secondary? Councillor Penner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've gotten some good information this evening, both from the applicant and then we heard some important feedback from neighbors. It's interesting because the longer, I'm sort of hearing some of the presentation and the questions and all that, now I remember a whole lot more about what we approved four years ago. And this is very similar. This is basically the same, the same project. And there is, there are some elements of it that are unique. It would obviously be preferable, in my mind, to have the commercial and residential be built simultaneously. That would be my preference. But at the same time, I think that this is still an appropriate use of the property because there will be a commercial component that goes along with it, that will be required in the development plan. And we do want to see development continue. And I would say that the applicant has done a good job, both this time and the previous time, in terms of addressing questions, concerns for neighbors. It's always a positive thing when an applicant proactively decides to go and speak to neighbors before the public hearing, because that can address a lot of the concerns ahead of time, as that did in this case. And so I'm comfortable approving it particularly because us as a council, back in 2013, and we were the same members then, we approved it at that time, and I think the reasons we approved it then are still appropriate now that, on the balance of this, it's a good project.
Thank you. Councillor Penner?
Yeah, I also am impressed with the effort that's been done to talk to the neighbors and develop the site, so to have least impact on the surroundings, I would say. And given that it's an odd-shaped lot in terms of, you know, commercial space, I do like the way it has the combination of commercial and residential. So overall, yeah, I think this is a good fit. As councillor Swagster said, ideally, it'd be nice to have the commercial right-ofways, but I also understand that sometimes things need to be done in phases, and it makes sense to me, the reasons given. So I will support this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing?
No.
No. Council, this has been something that's been in front of us before. We have dealt with it. Again, we see very few, if any, changes, and we obviously do see mixed use occurring in the city. And mixed use is generally a good use, especially in the downtown area. The applicant, as was stated, did try to meet with a number of the neighbors. We do see some mediation of some of the concerns when it comes to fencing, whether it comes to vegetation, as well as putting basements in rather than any piles. And I think going forward, this is going to be a unique property. I think what is important, though, in the development agreement is that there is provision to not give the second phase approval unless there is that commercial component. Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried, thank you. I'd like, someone move the variation, please, then, as well? Would like to move that, councillor Fair, seconded by councillor Siemens. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess I have, maybe I have a question, like, for, just for clarification. The reason it wasn't activated on before was because of economic conditions. Does it die after a certain amount of time? That's why it's back here?
One year.
Conditional use, I'll answer that, councillor Fair. Conditional use after one year expires. It can be extended occasionally by a second year, but beyond that, generally not. Is that correct, Mr. Workineteen?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Basically, we're affirming what we decided a few years ago, so I don't know if anything more needs to be said.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything further from council? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried, thank you. All right, we will now move to the reports or recommendations from the city manager. Mr. Workineteen, is there anything further to add?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Then we'll move to 9A. We have the counts payable. We've all had a chance to look at the back of the book and review all the counts payables. Are there anything, any questions on that? Seeing none? I'll ask for a motion, please. Councillor Funk, seconded by councillor Penner. Thank you. Any discussion?
That's got to be paid.
Thank you. Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried, thank you. We have 9B. We have the excavator licenses on page 34. We've had a chance to review that extensively. Councillor, who would like to move that, please? Councillor Siemens, seconded by councillor Penner. Any discussion? Anything further from council? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Keep it with me, I'm supportive.
Thank you. We have 9C. This is on page 43. This is the municipal board order in regards to tax assessment. On page 43, Mr. Workineteen, you have a recommendation to approve this or to accept this?
Yes, this particular file was an assessment appeal filed some time ago, and the city has now received a copy of the decision of the municipal board, which has agreed to reduce the assessment on the property roll number 156500. The tax cancellation impact is noted on page 48. Recommendation is to approve the tax cancellation accordingly.
All right, council, how would you like to proceed? Sometimes there's a price to be paid to get the municipal board to agree to something else?
Move to approve.
Thank you, councillor Penner. I'm kidding, I'm totally kidding. Is there a secondary? Thank you, councillor Fair. Any discussion?
No, I think it's quite self-explanatory.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Workineteen, just to clarify, this is actually something applied to, applied for by the previous owner, but the present owner is actually the one that reaps the benefit. Is that correct?
Correct. The original application was for the 2015 assessment year by West Fair Properties, LTV.
Thank you. And just to clarify as well, of the $26,523, there was a portion of that that was actually school taxed, but there is no remittance back from the school division. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried.
Did we miss one, Mr. Mayor? Other excavator licenses?
There is only one excavator license, as far as I know.
Two in the book, but there's one, 839.
Okay, let me clarify. There's a point of order. Mr. Workineteen, Deb, was there two excavator licenses that needed approval?
Yeah.
Thank you.
One of them.
You moved, pardon me. All right, councillor Fair moves to approve the second one. Thank you. Councillor Penner seconds that. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those All right, we have 9D, the Community Places Program Grant Application. This is in regards to Chote Park Playground Equipment. This is on page 49. Mr. Workineteen?
This information can be found beginning on page 49 of your agenda package. The provincial government had, after the election some time ago, suspended the Manitoba Community Places Grant Funding Program for recreation-related projects. The provincial government recently announced that the program was now reactivated and was seeking applications for funding from various communities and community groups. However, it's a very condensed application and granting program, with the funds must be spent by March of next year. So this particular playground structure, which had been planned for Chote Park within Steinbach, has not yet been started and would be an eligible candidate for that grant funding program. And administration is recommending council's approval so that the application can be submitted, and hopefully the city would be able to access grant funding of approximately $10,000 towards the total cost of this project.
All right, thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Funk moves to approve, seconded by councillor Penner. Councillor Funk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our staff is doing a great job of renewing these old green spaces in our community. And this is just another step. This is another park that's next on the list. We've had this done in Southwood, just not too far from it. And Poplar Park was done, I believe, last year, and this year, Chote Park's up for it. I think it's a great program, and I think we should try and apply for all the funds we can.
Thank you. Further discussion?
No, nothing further.
Anything further from council? Anything in closing? Council, we've obviously said that we want to see parks improved, and this program has been a good program of improving our green spaces. And so for us to try and maximize dollars through the Community Places Program, to see it reinstated, I think is good. I want to thank administration for identifying this quickly and making sure that this application gets put in place, because it's a very short little window that is allowed for this. And for them to have this project ready to go for this program, I think is commendable. Call for the question. All those in favor? Are there any questions of council? Seeing none, then we'll move to 11A, Sainrat River Conservation District Minutes, on page 66. We've all had a chance to review that. All right, on page 76, there's also the sponsorship request for Better Business Bureau. Any comments? Take it as information. We have 11C, the Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations, in regards to the federal gas tax funding, on page 77. Take it as information. And 12A, we have just something that was submitted to council for consideration. Councillor Penner?
Sure, I'm going to read the motion, and then I'll see if I have a secondary to get on the floor. Whereas the city of Steinbach was built on small business and entrepreneurship, whereas according to Stats Canada, 98% of Canadian businesses are small businesses, and 71% of Canadians are employed by small business, whereas the federal government's proposed changes to the small business tax will negatively impact small business owners, whereas Steinbach City Council recognizes the integral role of small businesses in the city of Steinbach, therefore be it resolved that the city of Steinbach write a letter to the federal government requesting that it abandon its proposed changes to the small business corporate tax code and come up with a new strategy that does not negatively impact small businesses.
Thank you. Is there a secondary? Councillor Swagster, go ahead, councillor Penner.
Thank you. Before I get started, I'd also like to note that the Chamber of Commerce submitted a letter to the city requesting that we support their letter to the Minister of Finance regarding this change as well. There's more detail in that letter, but I'm going to do a more, I guess, big-picture overview. So when the federal budget came out in spring, the theme was building a strong middle class through innovation, skills, and partnerships. However, the proposed new small business corporate tax changes the federal government is proposing is in direct conflict to their said mandate. Currently, small businesses get taxed in the neighborhood of 10% to 11%, while the money remains in the business. However, when business owners take the money out, they pay tax on that income like everyone else. You may ask, why is it important small business taxes remain low? When business tax is low, it allows and encourages owners to reinvest in their businesses by expanding, purchasing equipment, training their employees, giving raises, hiring additional staff, et cetera. This drives the economy. And just in case you think small businesses aren't paying enough tax, consider this. Small business owners already pay business tax, corporate tax, payroll tax, property tax, GST, PST, workers' comp, healthcare benefits, and more. Tell me, what incentive is there to start a business when over half the money goes to the government? What is the point of the long hours, the risk, the responsibility, the stress, and the uncertainty? In an interview with the CBC, the Prime Minister said the following about the proposed small business tax increase, and I quote, "We have to know that a large percentage of small businesses are actually just ways for wealthier Canadians to save on their taxes, and we want to reward the people who are actually creating jobs and contributing in concrete ways," end quote. All due respect to the Prime Minister, but he is simply wrong in his assessment of small business ownership. They are not the wealthy, they are not the 1%. In fact, small business owners earning less than $40,000 a year outnumber those making $250,000 a year or more, four to one. Small business owners are the ones creating jobs and contributing in concrete ways. Small business owners are, in fact, the backbone of the economy. Perhaps when the Prime Minister says small businesses are just a way for the wealthy to save on taxes, he's talking about doctors, accountants, and others professionals that incorporate. However, let's be clear, the government still receives taxes when these professionals take money out of their corporation, so the taxation the government receives may be delayed, but it is still paid. In addition, it is offensive and unfair to pay professionals as tax cheats taking advantage of loopholes when the ability for them to incorporate was given to them as a tax planning and retirement strategy. The government might do well to remember that unlike public sector employees, business owners, professionals, and private sector employees do not have a government pension plan waiting for them at the end of their careers. They don't have access to government-paid maternity leaves or parental leaves, EI, workers' comp, and other social programs that public and private employees have. As I mentioned at the beginning, the government says that it wants to build a strong middle class. However, this proposed tax increase actually ends up being an attack on the middle class. The government is effectively targeting the very businesses that employ the majority of the middle class. In other words, the majority of the middle class will now be working for businesses that would be taking a hit to profits. This means that giving raises to the majority of the middle class just became less affordable. It means that profit shares just shrink. It means less money for training, and it means less money spent on innovation, which is key to business success and a key driver of the economy. Make no mistake, this attack on small business will end up hurting the, so the government says it wants to benefit. If the government is serious about building a strong middle class through innovation, skills, and partnerships, it will do everything it can to support small businesses, not taxing them to the point where there is no incentive to even own a small business. With projected combined deficits of $102 billion by 2019, 2020, the real issue is that the government has a spending problem, not a revenue problem, and it's not fair to pass this on to small business owners. And that is why I ask for council's support in sending the federal government, specifically the Finance Minister and Prime Minister, a letter asking them to abandon proposed small business tax changes. The impacts of the proposed changes will have significant negative impact on Steinbach's and Canada's business, community, economy, and entrepreneurial spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Swagster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will certainly support the motion. I think it's important we take a step back and sort of ask ourselves the question, you know, in terms of what built Steinbach, and where did Steinbach come from, what's our history? And we know what a large part of that answer is, and that's business. And every business starts out as a small business, and eventually may become a large business, many of them remain small. But the reality is that business is an important part of our history, and it remains very important today. We have a lot of entrepreneurs in our city. And we are commenting on federal legislation, but it is fully appropriate to comment on something that's at another level of government when it's having a direct and potentially very negative impact on our community. And if there's a community that's going to be impacted by changes in the tax rate that affect businesses, it's a city like Steinbach where business is at the core of much of what we do. And this is reflected in the fact that we have a letter from the Chamber...
And this is reflected in the fact that we have a letter from the Chamber of Commerce expressing many of the concerns. And these are concerns that are being expressed by, by businesses across the country. You know, what are some of those concerns? Well, a few examples, some of the changes that are being proposed is to make it so that, make it harder to share income among family members and applying some so-called reasonableness test to assess if family members work for you. Well, anyone who's owned a small business at some point knows that the whole family's involved. It doesn't matter whether you're technically there every single day doing work. The entire family, you are taking that risk together. And there is nothing wrong with being able to, to be able to split income to be able to reduce the risk at least a little bit. We, there's also concerns about changes in regards to how passive investments such as real estate and stocks and such are taxed. And there's a reason why much of this is kept in a holding pattern for businesses because they need this money in order to fall back on when you go through difficult times. And when the money's taken out eventually, it does get taxed, as Counsel Penner noted. But this has an impact. If you're being taxed at the higher rate right away, well, that's obviously gonna have an impact on your bottom line. And there's also concerns about the rule changes making it harder to pass on your business in regards to the taxation that would happen there. Now, this doesn't affect just business owners. Anyone who works for a business could potentially be impacted as well. Because if businesses are negatively impacted and they're potentially laying people off, well, of course, then a lot of employees get affected, get affected as well. There's been a lot of discussion in the news about professionals, doctors and dentists and such that are incorporated and they're affected by these changes. In the past, we've talked a lot about doctor recruitment. Well, doctor recruitment is something we want to continue to do. And the last thing we want to see are rules that make it harder for doctors and other professionals to be able to make back some of the money that they paid in order to go to medical school, in order to have the career that they do now. We want an environment that is friendly toward business, that encourages businesses to grow, prosper, and thrive. And this has been noted by outside agencies such as the Canadian Federation Independent Business. This is a major issue. It is affecting, it will affect businesses across the country. And considering that Steinbach is a city that is so dependent upon entrepreneurial, you know, this entrepreneurial spirit and business and such, it is fully appropriate that we as a council support the Chamber of Commerce and their concerns and express these concerns to the federal government that we think these changes should be rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion from counsel? Counsel Funk?
Yes, thank you, through Mr. Mayor. I think it's agreed. We'd all like to see the tax system be fair and equitable for all communities. But I think these changes do not serve that objective. I believe they will have a negative impact on hardworking small business owners and professionals. They could definitely increase the cost of locally raised products and, and produce products too. These changes, with these changes, there will be no money left in businesses for future expansion or equipment purchases. It could also force very difficult decisions by business owners such as layoffs or closures. These changes are supposed to affect the wealthy, but I feel that small business and their employees will be the most affected. Starting a business has a huge risk. And I mean, twelve years ago, we risked everything to start our own business. And for the first few years, we, we went without it. I think it was, if I'm correct, over fourteen months before I could take a paycheck out of our business. And, and those were risks we took. And we were, looking back now, it's been successful, so we're happy to take those, those risks. But the benefit of a business being successful is that the whole community can benefit by growing the economy and creating jobs. We've gone from three people, three employees, to twelve. That's a huge increase over twelve years. And increasing the tax burden on these job creators will remove the incentives for young people, young entrepreneurs to take risk. I believe that these changes could have unintended consequences on small business at a time when many are facing increased minimum wages, increased EI and CPP, and a new carbon tax. My concern is that these changes will impact every small business by discouraging entrepreneurship and increasing the tax burden. Of the eleven point six million Canadians that are employed by the private sector, eight point two million are employed by small businesses. It's extremely important for us in Steinbach to, to speak up because Steinbach has one of the highest numbers of small businesses per capita in Canada. In closing, I just want to say I support policies that reduce tax burden for all Canadians, for, and for local business, reduce red tape, and allow entrepreneurs to create jobs in their communities. I'd also like to ask surrounding municipalities to follow us in making a similar motion and sending a letter of objection to our federal government in supporting us and our Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I hardly find words to express my disappointment at our PM's view on small business. Small businesses are the backbone of any community. If we didn't have small business, we wouldn't have community. Big businesses with comments like, such as he just made, big businesses, businesses would likely decide to move to maybe to the other parts of the country. We've seen that happen too. So I hope that this, communities across this country, and maybe AMM and FCM will support this initiative as well and let our Prime Minister know that this is not the right way to go.
Thank you. Further discussion? In closing?
Yeah, in closing, as Counsel Funk had mentioned, I just want to encourage other municipalities, chambers of commerce, and small business owners and professionals to make their voices heard to the Finance Minister and Prime Minister regarding their concerns. You know, I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, counsel, we have, this is not a usual topic that we, we cover. We often deal with local things and this is a national issue that's been brought up and I know there's been a lot of discussion. And so as we move forward, I think it's important that we are clear in how we want to see the government proceed. Certainly, I think as well as the government does need to consider this policy carefully and where they're heading. The intention, sometimes we know as governments that there are unintended consequences for good intentions. And, and I think that might, we don't know what the intention is, but this is a complicated issue. And I think obviously some reflection by the federal government as they look at this would be valuable. We do hear from our Chamber of Commerce that this is, could be a challenge. We as counsel aren't tax experts in the least. Many of us do own businesses, including myself and others. And we are concerned. And so to ask the federal government to reconsider and to examine this carefully, I think is appropriate. But certainly, we do want to see small businesses thrive and also fairness be prevalent in the system. Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Motion to adjourn, please. Counsel Penner, seconded by Counsel Funk. All those in favor? Carried.